I'm gonna go into my cave. In case everybody doesn't know, this is John Snyder.
In person?
In person, that's right.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, January 31st, 2023 at 7:01 PM. We do have a quorum here tonight, but we also do have a board member who is joining us remotely. So that's Jim. In pursuant to the video conferencing law, he can be a voting member tonight online because we do have a quorum here in person. So.
And you know.
And you know, is also joining us online as the alternate. So first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for January 9th, 2023. I know everybody got a chance to look at them because there were edits back and forth furiously. So again, thank you, everybody for looking at them because everyone else catches stuff. Did anyone have any comments or any additions, changes they wanted to make? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Lisa, second by Jim.
I'm looking around like, who's speaking? I thought John?
Okay, so unanimous?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a chance for anyone who's joining us either online in person to bring up anything they want to discuss that's not already on the agenda tonight.
I'm here on behalf of the Board of Trustees observing.
Hey, Susan.
And you're probably wondering where Carla is this evening. She had a hip replacement. So she's not even coming via Zoom, but you know, she sent a note and I thought, I better tell everybody.
I was worried.
One of those things when you see someone on a regular basis and they're suddenly missing.
I know.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move to close.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4575. This is for Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac located at 35 Cinema Drive, tax parcel number 46.1-6-5.12, seeking to update the existing building with improvements to the interior showroom areas, service area, and body shop. I know at the last meeting, this came up and there was a presentation and they did work on that over the couple of remaining items over the.
Since the last break, but Mike, did you want to add anything into that?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, I sent out an email which stated that I received some changes from John Courtney and Don DeHarner, along with some comments from Brett Cross, which I'm sure he'll fill us in on tonight. Sent that over to Bear and to John Schneider, who's with you or with us here tonight. And there are a few items that need to be taken care of. It's very possible that these items can be handled through conditions of resolution. That's completely up to you. But that is available for you to pass tonight if you want to.
Did you, Brent, want to talk about the changes from your perspective?
Yeah. So from way back when the project started, I was involved with the group that, I'm sorry, consultant group from, that does the site planning for John Snyder. And how come I can't think of their names?
Saratoga Associates.
Saratoga Associates, right. Ron Mogren. Ron Mogren, and he responded initially to some comments had directed to him via email. And then during one of the meetings, I think he was, he might have even been on the Zoom with the entire group. I can't remember. But at any rate, there was a few other miscellaneous questions, technical questions about drainage areas and, you know, how the collection was going to happen and where it was going to discharge and those kinds of things. And he pretty much addressed all those with only one open item that's within the private property. That's the kind of the technicality of working out where the, what's the status of the between the Chevy property and the Nissan property. And I know John Snyder said that he was thinking that might have already happened, but somebody was looking for, you know, maybe some filing documents or something like that. But there was a few, as Mike Scott had alluded to, there was a few technical issues that have been identified by John Courtney and Don DeHarner. But the good news is those are items that are physically tight and are kind of things that need to be in conjunction with the DPW. And I think Mike has proposed is that they, you must be comfortable moving forward with the approval as long as there's a condition kind of gives John Courtney the final say prior to Mike issuing the building permit. So the only other item that I had thrown out just this afternoon was that recommendation or request suggestion of having an additional condition that would obligate the owner to enter into a maintenance agreement for the stormwater system, which is a standardized form that we use in pretty much all subdivisions and other kinds of developments that have more than just a basic, simple stormwater management practice. So I think that's something that we wanted to see if we're interested or comfortable in adding to the list. But otherwise, I think that, you know, the site has met all of the normal conditions that we've gone through for lock, parking and circulation and drainage and that type of thing.
Yeah. So I think if you take a look at the, if you take a look at the actual resolution, you know, some of the things that Brent just brought up, there is a, under B, there is a piece in there about the, about easements. F, or I'll skip down to G. G is very much what the last thing Brent just said, which is entering into a stormwater maintenance agreement, which just as a sidebar, we've required these before. This isn't something new that we've done about, but there was some discussion about this being maybe a good thing to just include in general on these special permits, right? It's more obviously geared toward developments and things like that, not, you know, a private house because those don't really come here for special permits. But I think that that's something good for us to just to think about and keep on this list of conditions for special permits moving forward.
I think whenever we can do, when it's such an important thing, which it is, sometimes honestly, we, you'd forget for whatever. And as the boards change, people, you know, don't remember that this is, oh, how important it is. So I would be, I'm always in favor of making, if we have a group of standard conditions, and then if you want to add to it, maybe you have to add some additional language, but the basic thing is there, or you can say not applicable. But it just, I'm definitely in favor of it.
And then the other condition on there is F, and that's very much meant to address the, the things that DPW came up with. I know the image was hard to see. Some people said, if you zoomed in on it though, a lot of it is talking about slope of the, you know, of the sidewalk and some areas and some striping. So a lot of it is really around that, that kind of sidewalk area. And there's, there's around curbs and things like that. So nothing that changes the, you know, the look or function of this project, but little things that do need to be addressed that really are the responsibility of the DPW.
Well, I am disappointed we didn't have a chance to see this before today because it's, maybe it's unimportant, but you know, it takes a village, so to speak. And so I am really, I don't like this last minute stuff from anyone, be it our own staff or our people who come to us, because then things get overlooked. And so I don't know, I just don't want to be, is, Mike, are you comfortable with this? If we add this as a?
Yes. I mean, in general, you, you as planning board have reviewed just about everything that Bear and John had presented to you.
Okay.
So some of these, I'm very comfortable with this because I'll work with Brett and work with John, John Courtney and Don De. And of course, I've worked with Bear and John Schneider. We should be able to get this thing ironed out. And with a condition in there that, you know, most of the stuff has to be provided before a building permit is issued, that makes it kind of bulletproof.
And I think in this, I agree with you. And we've, we've mentioned that a lot of times before. In this case, you know, this, you know, a lot of this really was from the village, the holdup, not the applicant. And I know, so just, just for the record on that one, I don't want anyone to think, you know, John or, you know, anyone from Maguire wasn't getting their stuff. This was really internal to us not responding to ourselves in a timely fashion. So, but you know, I can, I can talk to, talk to some folks about that too, because right, it, it's not what we strive to do. We strive to have all the information well in advance. In this case, I don't necessarily think would be anything that we would look at, but, which is why we have, you know, Brent and John do it. But still, to have it all in advance is, is really the goal and the point, whether it's from the applicant of the special permit or from the village to have everything that the board needs to go forward. But I, you know, in this case, I think, you know, the big holdup would be on, you know, F, the, the little changes that have to happen, not the stormwater thing. That's something that we.
No, that's.
Is very regular. But, you know, I'm comfortable with it too, especially knowing that Mike is. I know Natalie took a look at everything today too, and they traded some emails back and forth. So.
I just don't want it on one person.
Yeah.
I want several people involved to be sure that, you know, you thought it through and there isn't like, well, wait a minute, what about however?
Yeah.
That's all. But I too don't want to hold this up.
Yeah. Any other questions that anyone has from, from the board for John or Mike or anybody? Okay. If people are comfortable with moving forward, then we can, we can do that tonight. We've got the resolution. So we do need to close the public comment period though. So I will, and we've done all the seeker, we've done everything else. So I will entertain a motion to close the public commentary.
I, public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry.
I move to close the public hearing for special permit 2022-4575.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? So then we can move on to the general conditions. So I will read, I will read the general conditions. And so this is a list of general conditions. We read for every special permit, no special permit will be granted by the planning board or the board of trustees unless the requested activity meets the following requirements. One, it will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Two, it will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity or neighborhood. Three, it will not impede the orderly development of the vicinity or neighborhood and is appropriate in appearance and in harmony with the existing or intended character of the vicinity or neighborhood. Four, the off-street, the street system and off-street parking facilities can handle the expected traffic in a safe and efficient manner. Five, natural surface water drainage ways are not adversely effective. Six, water and sewage or waste disposal facilities are adequate. Seven, the general environmental quality of the proposal in terms of site planning, architectural design, and landscaping is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Eight, lot area access, parking, and loading facilities are sufficient for the proposed use. Nine, the requested use or facility conforms in all their respects to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. And 10, the applicant has shown that steps will be taken where necessary to meet all performance standards and all other applicable general requirements. I will entertain a motion to say these requirements have been met. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor? Right. Oh, there's Jim Sand, I was going to say. Okay. That was Pat and then you, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. So we can move on to the resolution, which everyone has in front of them. So this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Special Permit Number 2022-4575, adopted on January 31st, 2023. Whereas this matter involves consideration of the following proposed action, Special Permit Number 2022-4575 for the proposal by Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac located at 35 Cinema Drive, tax parcel number 46.1-6-5.12, to update the existing building with improvements to the interior showroom areas, service area, and body shop, be on May 31st, 2022, June 13th, 2022, June 28th, 2022, July 7th, 2022, July 26th, 2022, October 25th, 2022, November 14th, 2022, this is great, November 29th, 2022, January 9th, 2023, and January 31st, 2023.
Let's move this.
The Village of Lansing Planning Board opened and continued a public hearing regarding this proposed action and there thoroughly reviewed and analyzed the materials and information presented by and on behalf of the applicant in support of this proposed action, including information and materials related to the environmental issues, if any, which the board deemed necessary or appropriate for its review. Two, all other information and materials rightfully before the board, including applicable comments and recommendations, if any, provided by the Tompkins County Department of Planning in accordance with general municipal law sections 239L and 239N. And three, all issues raised during the public hearing and/or otherwise raised in the course of the board's deliberations. And on November 29th, 2022, the Village of Lansing Planning Board, in accordance with Article 8 of NEAR State Environmental Conservation Law, the State Environmental Quality Act, SECA, and 6 NYCRR Section 617.5, and Section 123.2 of the Village of Lansing Code, and amended an environmental review and adopted a resolution for SECA review in connection with Special Permit Number 2022-4575, now therefore be resolved as follows. We've got two options. Obviously, we can grant and approve or deny, subject to the following conditions. So most of these are our standard conditions. But as we discussed, we did add a couple of conditions. One is F. So that is prior to a building permit being issued, site plan changes must be approved by the code and zoning officer. And G, prior to a building permit being issued, a stormwater maintenance agreement must be signed and subject to approval by village engineer, stormwater officer, and attorney. I will entertain a motion to grant and approve the special permit.
I move in.
Motion by Pat.
A second.
A second by Lorraine. All in favor? Aye. And I see Jim Sand too. So, great. Thank you. There you go, John.
That was a lot of dates.
We just needed you to show up. I was gonna say, just needed you to show up. I can't believe how many dates there were.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Was that your coat?
That's hilarious.
That is.
Oh, yeah, don't forget.
I don't think ever.
Well, I can think of another.
Well, yeah, well, not over, not in this short of a timeframe, shall we say.
I'm sitting. That was good. Okay. So next item on the agenda is other business discussion, proposed solar law. Oh, hey, Mike. Proposed solar array law. So Lisa and I did meet and we got, before we had talked about breaking the document apart into little sections, this time we kind of started over with the whole document so we can get that to everybody to take a look at. And we added some of the comments and things we had back in there. Again, I've mentioned it before, some of the stuff's like a fill in the blank. It's like, we are a village, city, municipality, ham, whatever. So we did that. We also started tagging some questions that had come up when Carolyn and Lisa and I had met before. And I did get that back out to Lisa and Carolyn. And I know I got a comment back, an email back from Carolyn today. So what I would say is, especially with the Maguire Cadillac, Chevy Cadillac thing being off the agenda, and I don't know if the beers are going to be at the next meeting. I think maybe they are. But I think maybe just to keep the ball rolling, getting the document out to everybody to start looking over and.
Yeah, we have to.
Asking comments and questions. I think there's, my point was, and I think me and Lisa and Carolyn meeting is a good example. The three of us had, you know, differing opinions on different things. And if we expand that out to the whole board, it's going to, you know, the same thing will happen. But there is enough of a foundation there now where I think we can have a good conversation as a whole board looking at that. So I will send that out tonight or tomorrow to everybody. And you can be prepared at the next meeting to chat about. And there's a couple of good examples in there, you know. One of the things says, you know, in the model law, it's, oh, well, you, we require, you know, these stamped engineering plans from, you know, before this thing can move forward. That's not generally how we operate here in the village. So Carolyn had a comment about that, which is a really good example of tailoring it towards the village, not just saying, oh, well, that wasn't a fill in the blank, so let's take, let's take what they say. But for things that we do want to change or, you know, strike out entirely, I think it's something good, obviously, for Natalie to take a look at. Of course, she would look at it anyway before we move forward.
And I would just ask you to copy Peter, because he'll probably.
Oh.
Me too.
You're not going to be here?
Another month. Where are you going? I mean, this is the third. This ought to be so simple.
We can join in from home. No.
No.
You're just going to miss one meeting.
Yes. So I actually called Carolyn because we were going to try to meet separately. And I said, I'm honest, honestly not sure that's so productive, actually. But she then said that she is the liaison for February and March.
I think it's perfect timing.
And so she was going to try to come in person and join the conversation. So if we keep it on the agenda, I think it'll go faster, honestly.
I think it will now. I think, I think we're good. I think that, you know, I've looked over it a bunch. I know you've looked over it a bunch. And I think that we can start working our way down it and changing it to, you know, fit the village here.
I also was going to take pictures of, down here on Oak Crest is a freestanding ground mounted. It is 21 panels, seven by three. It was 21.
It was 21.
I was, because we were sitting here trying to do the arithmetic on this, you know. And they're sort of a standard size. And we were grappling with the square footage. Do you go with square footage versus kilowatt? Because as technology moves along, the kilowatts are going to increase and the stuff's probably going to get smaller.
You can have more efficient panel, but I, yeah.
But so, you know, there's stuff like that to be thinking about, like how big and thinking about, you know, what zoning is, is protecting everyone. You don't want, we would very much, I think Carolyn, you know, wants to make this as simple as possible, but I don't want to make it so simple that it intrudes on some, I mean, roof mounted, I'm saying go nuts myself, but, because it's so inconspicuous and just, I don't know.
I think that's a good example. Lorraine drove up the road.
Yes.
Aren't in the right order.
But no, it's yellow house and it's got a basketball hoop. Basketball hoop. Look up.
I've been, so I've been missing it, but you can bet this week.
No, I was gonna take, but I was gonna take some pictures just to, you know, so you can see the size, because it's hard to kind of.
And I'll try, I drive past that one.
That one too. I didn't even notice it until you said it was there.
Yeah. I mean, I've never noticed it and I've driven down there.
Well, that's the whole point. And that's not bothering any of the neighbors. But then you start getting into the ground mounted. It's a whole new ballgame. But I'm hoping that we can, maybe we even have to break it up a little bit and just do residential, you know, and start with that, just to encourage people and make it simple for them. But you're going to have some thoughts on all of this, that's for sure, I would think.
Yeah. I mean, you're, when we start discussing this as a board, I mean, I was, I'm sorry, I was scribbling down stuff I had to do from what you said before, is you're going to have something that we have in front of us to start with, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Because one of the things that, well, I would, so you're talking about sending this document out, but then there's the New York State. Where was the one that had the little chart with setbacks?
That's that same one.
Is that in the back?
It's at the tail end of it, yeah.
Okay. But there's also the New York State guidance. Send the document that you used.
I'll send.
Or the model law, or whatever it is, just so people can be thinking about issues.
Send them both out, because the model law actually explains a couple of things.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
It doesn't explain the things that necessarily we're looking for answers to, like, hey, how did you come up with 4,000 square feet or 1,000 square feet? But it explains why they, you know, don't count like a, you know, canopy with solar on it as a, yeah, so.
But I mean, there's just so many issues that keep coming up on this. It's like, you know, every time we pick up the newspaper, there's like, oh, you know, covered parking lots, all with solar panels.
Yeah. No, I, like I said, I think there's enough of a foundation there that we.
Right down here, I think would be lucky. I mean, my gosh. But at any rate, of course, there's issues too with snow and things. So I don't know. It gets, you can, we'll have to try hard not to get bogged down, but I think until we just, yeah.
If we, if we get bogged down in an area, you know, we, we can move fast enough and come back and revisit it. We don't have to answer every question in some linear fashion.
How many bushes equal a tree?
Three.
I do have a question about those. So can anybody just put solar panels up on their property? Or do they have to get certain approval from the village?
Right now?
Okay. Right now, they can.
It's considered.
Panel is an accessory building.
I was gonna say, it's considered an accessory building if you looked in your code book. And I also question whether it should be called an accessory building. That's part of, that's just me. I know it's the standard kind of in zoning, but I'm thinking, so maybe it's time for a change. Because then your standard setbacks also get involved with that. And I'm just not sure with some of the situations we have, whether it serves it, you know, the butters well, that's all.
Yeah. I mean, it's, when it being classified as an accessory building, you get up to 400 square feet. And once it goes over the 400 square feet, then it becomes the principal building and your setbacks change some.
Yes. So we have to talk about that kind of stuff because we don't all understand that.
I think 400 square feet is that number we find.
It is 400 square feet. I know. I mean, that's exactly what I just was, well, we were saying, oh, no.
Maybe it was 500.
Yeah.
To whatever.
We did the 500.
It's interesting when you talk about, you know, like the size, the size of the solar array, like square footage of a building is different than square footage of a solar array. And, and we looked at, we looked at the, was it the city of Ithaca? No.
Town.
It was the town of Ithaca?
I tried to.
We looked at theirs. And if you look at the square footage, they put in, and what the state's like kind of default value is again, they just, I'm sure they had some rationale behind it. It is massive.
Yeah, I just.
If you consider like the, the size of a panel on the array down on Oak Crest, oh, would be a ton of them. Well more than you need for a house.
Yes.
Or a business, depending on the business. But yeah, so I think, yeah, some pictures and maybe I'll go get some measurements.
But I think it would be easier if we went through it all together, because if, if just do a subcommittee and come forward, then you're going to have the same question.
Yeah. Like I know, we have, we have to do it together. And I think we're at a good place to, I think we're at a good place to.
I said, we can't do this ourselves.
I will C C Peter on it too. I'm also going to talk to Tony and see if Tony would like to.
I think Tony.
Come back for a couple of meetings, even on Zoom and just join us because he's a wealth of knowledge on.
Or even just comment after he made.
Yeah. Well, yeah, either way, if he would be willing to participate somehow, he's a, he's a little resource on all of that. And I'm sure has insights that none of us would.
I mean, he did agree, when he first left the board, I said, can we come back? He said, absolutely. But of course, he's had a situation.
Yes.
Change in his life. So who knows? But I certainly would ask him.
Oh, absolutely.
Font of info on this.
Yep.
I had a question, kind of related question for Natalie. The, it was mentioned before about the unified solar permit.
About what?
Application, the unified solar application the New York State puts out.
Oh.
Is that something that is, does it get handled through the boards or does it get handled through the planning board? Or should that just be like my choice to take to the Board of Trustees? That's my question.
So none of this maybe comes to?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm still collecting data on this. I was able to talk to a couple of solar companies. I said, okay, I'm gonna ask you a question. I mean, you've had to fill out the, you know, the unified solar permit and everything. And they said, well, we're used to filling it out. It's, it's quite extensive. And I figured I could get a little better rile out of Brett here because hand up now. But it's, I'm still, still kind of predicting on whether it would actually be useful or not, because if you get a really small array, then you have to provide a ton of, of information. Is it, solar companies could do it, but if it's a single person.
So you're talking residential still?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we keep grappling with. But let's hear what.
Go ahead, Brian. I think it's actually commercial also. I'm not, I'm not positive.
But I mean, for residential, we could, you know, I think we're wanting to make it reasonable.
Yeah. Well, it'll be required by the solar company to fill it out because they have a lot of technical information on it.
But they'll probably help if they want to sell it. So.
Sorry, Brian.
Yeah. So my understanding of it is, it's a, they were having trouble with, the industry was having trouble with multiple towns having different levels of expectation of submittal. And so they came up with some, Nicerta or somebody came up with what they believed was the necessary information, request for information so that solar company could know what to expect when they, when they file for a permit application. But as far as I'm concerned, and I think I'm echoing what you're alluding to is, is that it's in, in small residential projects, it's overkill. It's, it's, to me, it's going to take me longer to review that unified application than if they just simply filed a building permit under.
Yeah.
And so it, at the Village of Kierga Heights, what I said, because there was, at the time, back when that first came out, there was this incentive program and you could get. back when that first came out, there was this incentive program, and you could get a little cash stipend through the NYSERDA process, that if you adopted that uniform, unified solar permit as the basis for allowing solar projects to come through your municipality. And my recommendation was, I, I don't care, go, go ahead and, and adopt it, the $2,500 stipend, because as far as I'm concerned, I'm gonna do what's the quickest way, whether it, whether they fill that out or not, I'm going to, you know, expedite an application as quick as I can. So I, I think it's just a document that's intended as a building permit application.
And what I'll do is, I've got it, I'll send it out so you
Oh, yeah, that would be good to see.
Like, so you guys can take a look at it. Thanks, Brad.
Sure.
But no, that was kind of what, you know, in fact, Carolyn, this is, when we first started working on this, this is kind of a different approach by using the solar model from the New York State. She had taken a lot of that information, but she'd structured it differently. And so, you know, she feels this is more complicated, but I think, the one thing we did agree, and actually, Mike and I sort of were agreeing on certain, some things, and she had, was, was raising different issues, but we all agreed that we really want the residential piece to be pretty easy, unless it's a large ground mounted, or, that was the only, the ground mounted is
I think that's where the big thing came in, right? There was even discussion about, you know, and I think Mike had brought it up, you know, what if the mall wants to cover their, you know, entire roof in solar panels? And we were like, oh, maybe that's, maybe that's a bad thing, maybe we need to talk about that.
I don't see
I don't know, maybe put solar panels on the entire roof.
Unless, I mean, but there are fire laws and all that stuff. I mean, there's all this other stuff that kicks in, isn't there?
Yeah, here's the other thing too, is, is like Brett had mentioned, it provides so much information that I'm not gonna sit there and go, oh, that's wrong. Information is like a king.
Yeah.
It's, it's, but the good part of it, I see, is I'm gonna have all the information on what goes on Mr. Smith's house, and it's gonna be in my file, in their folder. So if they ever have to go back to it, say, boom, here it is. That's, that's the one good thing about it that I can see.
Well, and it's interesting too with the model law, because after this one, this is really just solar, whether it's on a roof or ground mounted or integrated into the building, you know, in blinds or sandwiched in between window panes, whatever. There's another model law after this for energy storage systems, which we do have a couple here in the village, I think there's two, because I don't think they've been decommissioned. I think they're still
No, they are.
So there, there's a model, so I think this'll be, that one, I've looked at, that one's also vastly more simple, right? You're not mounting a battery or a storage system on your roof. It's going on the ground somewhere, and it's, you know, a lot of it's more size and safety and things like that, so. But it'll be good exercise for us to get this, get this through and work on it, and then tackle that one next. And I would imagine that, that, you know, when these kind of new things come up, that the state would can, I would hope that they would continue around this trajectory of sort of providing these model things for municipalities to work off of, because I think there's a ton of value in, yeah, in that.
Okay. Yeah, I think you're gonna see the solar mode you will the best, because with my experience, you've got, you've got the one main one over on Brantwood, and that is to collect energy from this area and put it back onto the grid. And I know that New York State has certain classes of areas, A, B, and C, where they only allow so many of them, because they don't want to store a bunch of them, so you're not gonna see a lot of that type. But you also have Dairy One, who has a large facility there, rather large facility for just themselves, and very costly. So how often is that gonna happen? And then the ones you have for residents are very small units that go right on the wall, which, which store a lot of the energy. So I, I don't think it's gonna get that, it's not gonna be as common as it is for solar.
Probably not.
Yeah, there you go. I told them now I could just use my truck, I don't even need one.
Did you do, is that true, that's not a, the new truck out there?
We can talk about it later. Anyway, so that's where we are, the solar law. I will, I'll send, I'll get ahold of Tony and Peter, and I'll send that out to everyone, and Mike can send out that unified application. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the trustee report. There was no trustee meeting, so, yeah. Pat, you are up for February 6th and February 20th. I think I got those dates right.
20th is canceled.
Twenty?
It canceled.
Imagine that, huh?
Okay, and then into, into, into March is Jim, so.
Other business, though, that people want to bring up?
Lighted corner of Boemax and Warren Road is still screwed up.
Really?
I sat there for like five
Is that a state lane?
Yeah, I think, I think Brett said it was a DOT
County.
That's right.
Did you try getting in the left lane while you're gonna take a left turn?
No, because I didn't
I swear that's what sets it off. Try it. Just, because half the time, there's nobody behind you anyway. Just see the right and turn left.
As much as, I don't, I avoid going straight.
I have, I only
I only make a right.
Wait lately.
Just avoid going that way.
Yeah.
At one point, there was discussion of making that a one way, or to try, remember that, remember when East Point went in, there was a whole bunch of discussion about trying to discourage people from going down through
Oh, to, yes.
Yeah, but I can add to that, since I've lived there for the last three years, especially during COVID, working from home, the people that are cutting through that go down that way are the people coming from Bor Warner and the other businesses on Warren Road. It's their shortcut to get to Tripphammer. It's not the residents that are living in that area.
And it, it's
But whenever I go, maybe I'm just going at the wrong time, there's hardly
No, I have been through there all kinds of random times, and I
And people
Oh, gosh, rush hour, Atlantic crap.
Yeah, no, you can, and you know what? People are going fast. They're, they don't go
Yeah, that's the thing, the people do not go 30 on the Boemax.
No, they fly through there, they fly through there. But as far as the lay goes, I will tell you this, what I have noticed on the weekends, it's almost like the, the timer has switched, and it's continually changing. And I did notice that on the weekends, but then on the weekdays, it's back to the, doesn't change unless somebody is pulling out of the post office, then it will change.
Luckily, there usually is.
I know. Well, at Christmas time, it was great, because
I gotta just set
But yeah, there's definitely something wrong with it. Is there somebody we can look to the county?
I've got John Courtney now, and he knows all the people there, so.
Well, tell him, well, maybe he did tell him, and they fixed it for a while, and then it went bad.
Thanks for bringing that up, Pat.
Sure.
At least you know it wasn't just me.
Some sarcasm in that.
I heard it. I'm writing in the minutes, you can't hear it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be on YouTube.
So what, anything else that we need to know about?
I have, I made a contact with the community bank about Pizza Hut. I finally was able to make a contact. You know how it is, trying to get a single person at a big bank, find out who's responsible. I've got a name and I got a number, a very nice person, they're going to have stuff cleaned up tomorrow.
Oh, wow. That was good timing.
I've never seen a person there.
No, and you know what?
I've checked it, because, well, without
I do too, Lisa, I do too, I know. But I will tell you, I especially checked it after that snowfall we had, where we had
It was unsnowed.
And it was totally covered.
Yes.
And I'm like, okay, so nobody
I said to my husband, oh, my gosh, I don't see any footprints.
I know, I did the same thing, yeah.
Tire marks, yeah.
Really, the only other thing is I, next, the next board trustees meeting next week, the whole lighting commission disbandment will be
Okay.
And they'll probably set a public hearing for some changes that were made, I believe Natalie received them from
Yeah.
She already did a lot of work on that, she went through, did a lot of work on that, just changing where it says lighting commission to code and zoning officer in the, in the code.
Good.
And that's really, other than, I've been working with Brian on stormwater around the village, and I'm working on my naughty list, so.
So any
Your naughty list?
On Lansing Meadows, when they're next, have you been hearing anything?
David?
No, Lansing Meadows, because you know what? July will be here soon enough, whatever the next date is.
I have not heard anything about him at all, but I do, he has, he will be hearing from me, because his, his temporary certificate of compliance is up.
Ah.
So I will be sending him a notice of violation.
Great. Like I said, have we heard anything from, okay.
And the naughty list are people that have not called me finalize
I wanted to ask you about
Building permits, so I have to go up. That's all I got.
So I, so I saw that there was gonna be a new sports bar going in over at the
Yeah.
The Tripp, yeah, so won't they need a permit? Because it sounds like they're gonna go sit on the Nardis side, which Nardis hasn't been there in years.
I still, that's what I still call them.
I know.
Yeah, they're supposed to open, I think, and they said they want to open April, which
I know, and so then I, no, this is this
Next to by like
The Rose, the Rose
Evermont?
Oh, in the
The Tripp Evermont, like, kind of
Where the Rose is
Yeah.
It's just the left-hand side, it's not the right.
Right, but
Build a wall up, and it used to be, it used to be two bars, or two restaurants, whatever you want to call it, so now it is again.
Ooh.
So then they'll have
Next to reuse, kind of?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
They have already.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, they've started building in there.
Oh, wow.
And that clinic is still not open?
I have not heard anything from the VA clinic.
Huh, your signage is all up.
I don't usually poke the bear when I'm busy.
Yeah, well, no need. Okay, so, and David Beer is not ready?
Spoke with David today, he's hoping to be at this next meeting. He did, Tim Sneed sent over revised site plans with a lot of the infrastructure on it. It was sent over to Mr. Cross, and it was also sent over to Don DeHerner and John, and they are reviewing it. And as soon as they, I had put out an email and said that I really don't want to see the Beers come back and present anything other than the final to us.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It's a very big and complicated project.
David was good with that.
I'm sure he is, yeah. He doesn't want to have to keep coming to.
Mike, there is one thing I want to bring up, just something I've noticed. That hotel down the street, that Blue, or whatever it's called, what's it called?